Good morning. Bill, I can't hear you. There you are.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, I can't see who's there, so.
Okay.
I can see Esther.
Andy LaBrec and Esther, they're waving at you right now.
Hi Sandy, hi Esther.
Comes to their time of the agenda, I'm gonna have them come a little closer, so.
Okay.
Zoom can hear them and see them a little better.
Better, good.
All right, I am going to call a meeting to order at nine o'clock, all members of the board are present. Um, here from the public. You folks are listed on our agenda, so we won't consider you public at this point, okay? Um. I'm gonna go into our, um, my first selectmen briefing. And then my suggestion would be, I'll entertain a motion to move the item regarding ASCO up on the agenda, so we don't tie these ladies up any longer than we have to. Uh, we'll wait till we do this. Um. I don't think any of us are surprised, but besides several requests for status, we have not received the union, um, contract yet.
I'm having a feeling of deja vu.
Yeah, um. If I'm not mistaken, it's a month this week, which already puts us in contradiction of our contract where they're supposed to have it back to us within thirty days, but Karen has been on it and.
In the, Bill, in the meantime, the old contract remains in place, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
Um, and I would think that the people in Public Works would be, uh, in the, the union members would be all over this in terms of.
Oh, and, and they are, Karen has been getting complaints and everything, and, uh,
Yeah.
I sympathize with her, but our hands are kinda tied. So, uh, we're, we're at the discretion of the union to get on the ball and, and get us this, and I, again, I know because she's copied me on several other things, Karen has been trying. Um. But, and we've got a lot of promises, but it hasn't happened yet.
Mm-hmm.
Trumpco House, um, as I had mentioned at our last meeting, we've got the two bids in, um, for removal of the oil tanks and the, um, boiler down there. And that amount is eighty-five hundred. And I did get the proposal in from, uh, Zul, uh, Rick Zulik for the, um, his share of doing the soils testing and the, uh, wetland designations and everything that we don't have. And that is an amount not to exceed a thousand dollars. My thought was, we don't have to move it on today, but we could add it to the agenda later if we want. I, I think it's important we get going on this. And my thought was to petition the Board of Finance to approve an expenditure out of our CNR fund to cover that amount, um. I'm told we don't have any leaking of that oil tank yet. But if we do, I, I know you've been down in that cellar, Catherine, um, I don't know, I don't think Roger has.
I thought it already had leaked.
But, um, what we don't need is catastrophe down there, and if we do have, I'm not even sure how much oil we have in there, I've asked Nutmeg to take a testing on it, although I haven't got a report on that back yet, but, um, chew it around, um, on the board, and I'm, I'm thinking that that's one way that we could get, get going on it immediately. And I, I do look at it as somewhat of an emergency to get it done. Uh, Note Memorial Hall gutters were started last Thursday, they should be finished this Thursday. Weather permitting, and so far, I think we're gonna have pretty good weather. Um. And I don't know if any of you have noticed, but there's machinery out, um, we're starting the, uh, pavers. And, um, that I have assurances that will be completed no later than November fifth. And, um, we've notified the library, and they've been very cooperative, and all of our other functions, we have arranged access from the side door.
Do they have to cure?
Excuse me?
Do they have to cure for, do they have to cure for a while?
No, no, uh, the pavers are each individual tiles. And they'll be laid just as, if you'd be laid regular tiles. So there's no, no curing process on it, so. The, the, the incidental part typically with these things are put down, and I'm a novice, I'm not real familiar with the process, but I'm told by experts that are, they use under the pavers two inches of sand. And in this instance, we've got in some areas a foot to eighteen inches of sand under these things, so. We've been doing two days of loading of sand out there, and we're gonna mix that with our regular sand. So we'll pick up supplies, and everybody that's looking is very surprised that we got the twenty-seven plus years out of that that we did. Um, but certainly it was time for a change. Um, the front doors and everything continue to, uh, work properly, probably smoother than they ever have. I'm not gonna wood, the only thing we'd like to do is, uh, get them treated and painted, uh, before the winter. Transfer station status, uh, we have distributed approximately, um, between twelve hundred and thirteen hundred stickers overall, uh, reception has been very good. Um. We have actually turned around, probably less than a handful of people, but we've had self-turners, uh, probably, uh, two dozen plus, uh, turn around when they see the booth and somebody manning it there. They turn around and don't come in, so. So far, so good, the, uh, booth now has telephone and wifi hooked up this week, uh, hopefully, uh, or the first part next week, we'll be finalizing, hooking up our computer system there for our operator. Uh, relating to that, um, we have got, um, uh, job descriptions, and we have been advertising in the webpage and also the citizen for the new position, for the transfer station position, DP slash DPW. Um, we've got about ten applications in. And I'd like the board to think of the process that, that you'd like to follow on, on the hiring on that. One thing that I had applied or thought was, uh, appointing a selection committee, um, to review those and make recommendations for our board, say, the top three or four. And then we would interview them, but, uh, I'm open for suggestions on that. I was thinking the.
I'd be glad to be, I'd be glad to be on that committee.
On the.
I think that's a good idea.
On the interview panel.
Uh, the selection committee and the panel.
I was thinking, you know, I think a selectman's appropriate. I was thinking, uh, um, uh, Casey McHugh as the director. Um, Joe Kalanowski indicated he would be happy to, uh, help with that if we wanted him to be on that, and I was thinking of a union person, perhaps Karen. Uh, I don't think we need more than four people.
I think that, um, whether Joe is on there should be left up to Casey. If he feels he needs the help.
Yeah, we could do, we could do that, I'll, I'll talk to them about it, but anyway. Um. And we, we can address that a little later in the agenda, but that's what I had in mind. Uh, I have circulated a new, um, job description for Casey's position, which is maintainer two. I've submitted it to both council and, and the union, who, the union did one minor tweak on it, and they were right on um, on what we needed on that, but what I'd like to do is I'll send that out to the board. If you guys are comfortable with it, I'd like to post it this week. Uh, according to the union contract, it has to be posted to the union um, for a minimum of five days first.
What's supposed to happen during that period, is that where they put forth someone that they think is qualified?
The union, um, contract calls for a seniority basis. Base, um, being moved up there, I've already been informed by one of the staff up there that he intends on requesting that position, but that's something that I believe that the boards, it's the board's discretion to review, um, capabilities and everything, I don't think it's an automatic self-appointed position because you want the position, and we may have a different sort of opinion with that person, but, uh, uh, process is, it's posted to the union, they let us know if they have an inquiry of somebody that's interested in it. And then we go to the next stage.
All right, thank you.
All right, um. Just one other point under, under this, the Board of Finance is meeting this Thursday. Um, I know Chris has started working, um, and with John Keehold, the acting chairman, excuse me, John Kopeck, um, on, on a tentative budget. One of the things I think that is into being entertained, and I will discuss this with the Board of Finance on Thursday. One of the changes, uh, of things of, of the setup how we normally have it. We're gonna recommend, or the Board of Finance is going to consider having the Board of Ed present their budget prior to the Board of Selectmen, uh, presenting the town budget. That's the.
That's how we've, that's how it was set up in the past.
No, in the past, well, at least as, as far back as we look, the Board of Selectmen have presented their budget, and then Board of Fin, uh, Education presents last.
Oh, and then what they were doing was coming back for Board of Selectmen recommendations.
Right, right.
Right, and for, for my, my opinion is, is that the Board of Selectmen really shouldn't be making recommendations about the Board of Ed budget. The Board of Ed budget should stand.
By statute, you can't, I know they have informally asked us from time to time, but I think by statute, that's strictly on a Board of Finance.
Yeah, well, that stopped when I, uh, became First Selectman.
So that's gonna be run up the flagpole, um.
Okay.
And I'll keep you posted on what the finding is. I don't have anything more, I'm not sure.
Uh, I just have one thing I wanted to mention, um, and I don't know where it fits, but, uh, we're having some car break-ins. Like a smash and grab. There was one out on Ashford Community Connections, don't remember where it was, I can get you the information, but it happened on, I think it happened on Sunday, Sunday or Tuesday or Saturday.
This must be recent, because the last report.
Yeah, it was recent, and they broke, you know, broke the window to get into the car.
Well, we'll certainly, and I'll, I'll check with Troop C on that, we don't wanna see that, I've been pretty lucky so far, but thanks for noting that. Where did you say you saw that?
Uh, I saw it in Ashford Community Connections, and I'm, just, it just went out of my head as to exactly where it was. Uh, I didn't know the person who posted it, I can look again.
Yeah, and I can. I can consult with our liaison, it gets more information, and I'll try to remember to do that.
Yeah.
All right, um, at this point.
Not in for a second, it was at Ashford Memorial Park.
Well, that's right, that's why it was so out.
Was that the incident?
Even more outrageous.
Was that the incident, it happened yesterday?
It happened yesterday, and, um, the troop was involved, they did a report. And they're investigating.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Thanks, I did hear a call down there, but I thought it was an injury report. Um, but good, thank you.
Also, just, just to let you know, Bill, and I don't know what we do about it, but, um, you and I were both at the Hungarian Social Club event on Sunday.
We were.
And, uh, I know the Hungarian Social Club had been trying to get a couple of dead trees taken care of for the last few years, and what happened was one of them fell across the road. We're, we're lucky that it didn't hit a car, or, and, and nobody slammed into it. But it was one of those two trees, so I wanna make sure that we're contacting, what is it, uh?
Well, they're contracted by Ever, by EverSource, but it's, it's, it's Asplin who's doing the cutting in that.
Right, but that's, um, but also, isn't that Putnam's jur- jurisdiction in terms of their DPW?
DOT.
DOT, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, that is their route up to one eighty, uh, up to Route eighty, excuse me, eighty-nine.
So should we be saying something to them to say, hey, can you get EverSource or whatever on the ball here?
I can do.
Uh, the tree.
We're, we're in constant contact with EverSource and Asplin, because we have trees all over town that are in the same sort of jeopardy, and I don't know if that tree was marked, I did take a look at the tree, it was surprisingly smaller than I, I thought it was gonna be.
Yeah, so if we could do, if we could do a.
Address.
If we could do a follow-up at least to let them know, there's, there's another tree there as well, when we know about the trees, just, just let them know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, I will entertain a motion to move, um, under new business item F up and on the agenda.
So moved.
Segmented.
And there's a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Ladies. Um, if you'd move up here a little closer, we'd make sure that, uh, Catherine, if we have anybody else in the audience can hear you. Um, as you know, um, I've reported to the board, I, I've had several meetings with, with ASCO. Um. And, um, Sandy LaBrec is, is the new president of ASCO, and Esther is the vice president. And they had requested to come and have a open discussion with the entire board. So having said that, I will give you folks the floor.
Thanks. Hello, are we the only ones here? Pretty much.
Yes.
Okay. I had prepared a few words for anybody who might be joining in, except, uh, um, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, um, for anybody who might be joining in via Zoom who wasn't familiar with ASCO, but I think we all of us are.
Yeah, I, I might say, if you've got a little spiel, if you wanna say there, this is being recorded, so. While somebody may not be joining us today, they may be tuning, I mean, the concept of the Zoom and recording them is that for future reference, they can do that, so you might wanna
Okay.
Go ahead and give you a little explanation.
Okay. My name is Sandy LaBrec, I'm the newly elected acting president of the Ashford Senior Center Organization, affectionately known as ASCO. Which is a nonprofit, all-volunteer organization, whose vision is to enrich the lives of our seniors by bringing them together for enjoyable events. Some of these events raise money to be used for the benefit of our seniors and for other worthy local causes. Before COVID, ASCO ran many low or no-cost programs at the center such as Dine Bingo and some programs and events which we partially funded so that they would be ongoing, even if attendance was low on some days. Such as exercise programs led by a paid instructor. Since the pandemic ended, our volunteers have slowly returned over time. However, some of our valued members and volunteers still have not returned due to continuing fear of being exposed to the ongoing variants of COVID. This has left ASCO in a situation where every member is needed in order to run an event. Due to this slow return of volunteers after COVID, Kit Eves stepped up and has been running some of the programs which ASCO used to run.
Excuse me, who's, who's, excuse me, who stepped up?
Kit Eves.
I couldn't. Thank you. Yep.
Um. ASCO and the Senior Center have now evolved into a partnership within which the Senior Center runs programs and services that are little or no cost to its visitors, while ASCO is primarily focused on events with a fundraising component. Currently, ASCO's weekly bingo on Tuesday nights is our only ongoing fundraiser. We're now planning new events which we think seniors will enjoy, such as an international smorgasbord, a crazy hat dinner, and a fifties and sixties themed dance. Some of the donations that, that ASCO has made in the recent past include partial payment for the new dishwasher sanitizer in the Senior Center's kitchen, Roy Hill chairs and a love seat for the entry room at the center, and a TV. This past week, we voted to support the Thanksgiving dinner to be held this November with our donation earmarked to subsidize the meals of homebound seniors. We now have a monthly meeting between the Senior Center and ASCO to coordinate our events and cooperatively sponsor new events. My presentation here is also a step toward coordinating with our Board of Selectmen for input. With this increased cooperation, we're looking forward to an increasing number of people returning to the center, both program attendees and ASCO members. Unfortunately, Kit Eves will be out of the center for five to eight weeks due to health concerns. While Ti, uh, Tess Gross will be covering the office in the interim, ASCO members have also volunteered to help out in any way we can. We look forward to working together with the Senior Center going forward.
Thank you. Esther, anything you'd like to add to that, or?
No.
No? Okay.
I have a couple of questions. I have a couple of questions. Sure, you said the Dime Bingo and the exercise programs were run by ASCO pre-COVID?
Uh, yes. At least of. Um, that's what I'm told, I wasn't part of the active day-to-day, um, part of, uh, ASCO. Uh. Just be pre-COVID, but I know at one point in time that we were the ones who put those programs into effect.
I think that was, I actually think that was a long time ago. Because I believe that Kit was running, um, the, certainly the exercise programs that were there um, before COVID. And had to, you know, stop them for a period of time.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, the other thing is on the fundraising. Uh, actually, uh, you said you made a donation to uh, the scene, uh, a donation to partial payment for the dishwasher?
That's what I was told.
Yeah, what I was told, uh, apparently, which is true, is that you paid for the delivery. Which was three hundred dollars. And it was paid directly to the people who were, uh, to deliver the dishwasher. I'm just ask, asking why that wasn't just made as a contribution to the Senior Center or to the town to do that?
That was under, under the previous president, and I'm not entirely sure why.
Uh, I would think in the future, if you're going to make a donation or offer to make a donation, that it would be made, is done as an offer to the Senior Center, so that uh, whoever our director is would be addressing that. Uh, and Bill, from my perspective, the director could have come to you and said, hey, look, I'm gonna go three hundred dollars over my budget on this, is that a problem?
Yeah, we, we actually had money in our budget to do that, I heard about it after the fact. Um, as you, that dishwasher, I think, if I remember right, was over four thousand dollars that the town put in it.
Right, I think, I think, I think at the time, Kit wasn't aware that the payment was, a payment was gonna be made to, directly to the people that were providing the dishwasher. To me, it's kind of like you skipped a step.
But my understanding is, is, is that you're correct, that the, the three hundred dollars was paid for delivery of it, or partial delivery of it.
Correct.
It's appreciated, but I think the process would probably be better served the way Catherine is talking about it. Being right, our coordinator and, and, and the town.
It's also how we track, how we're able to track our donations and, um, you know, kind of through proper channels. So I would suggest that in the future, if you wanna make a donation, great, we appreciate it. Um, but it should be done, uh, with the knowledge, uh, you know, talking with the Senior Center directors, how that should be handled.
Okay.
We could work, I, I think we need to strengthen the protocol on that a little bit.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I had one senior said to me, and I wasn't gonna argue with the lady, she said, well, that's our dishwasher. And I said, well, based on what? And she says, well, we paid for it, I said, no. The dishwasher came to close to five thousand dollars, you paid three dol, three hundred for mailing delivery. That's your choice voluntarily, so. So it seems like that, I, I, I think if we, not the protocol proper, we won't.
Right, also, also donations become, um, any donations of items, whatever, are part of the Senior Center, so they're now, um, under the town's domain. We insure them, we, we pay the insurance, we pay the electricity, we pay the water uh, for the Senior Center for, um, for, uh, you know, that's the town's property. And just to make sure that that's clear, that that is.
Yes, yes.
And then so, and whatever is being coordinated, whatever's being done there should be coordinated through the Senior Center Director. Because she's accountable. She's accountable for maintenance, uh, and for, uh, um, making sure that the things that are in there are kept safe.
Mm-hmm. I'm aware that the donations become part of Senior Center. Um, I try to make sure that everybody else knows that, there are some people.
But they don't.
Well, some people, it bounces off their eardrum and doesn't get to the proper place, you know, no matter how many times you tell them, they have an idea in their head and they just.
I, I think that's what's contributed to some friction. So, you know, that's, that's the thing, I'm sorry that it bounces off their ears, it's not, uh, anybody being mean, it's just that's a fact. So.
I happened to be First Selectman when we opened the Senior Center, and Earl Smith was the president of ASCO at the time. And for a number of years, they had been collecting money through fundraises and everything. And, and bought all the tables and chairs and everything. And donated them to the Senior Center.
Right.
There are still people over there that say those are our chairs and tables. And it's, it's one of those things you can never get it through their minds, actually what the protocol was. Somewhere we had a written agreement, because as Catherine mentioned, when we accepted that, graciously accepted that donation, it became our responsibility under our umbrella liability coverage to cover all of that stuff. So. Those are misconceptions that have festered over the years, but it's our chairs, not your chairs, you can use our table, you know.
Which I repeatedly tried to correct.
Also, also, I was trying to understand where ASCO, uh, where the boundaries are between ASCO and this, you know, and the towns, um, work with the Senior Center. And so I looked at your bylaws, and I'm not sure if I have the right version, I had something that showed that uh, I, Article one B was that you are responsible for the programs, uh, care and programs of the Senior Center, which is not true. So I didn't know if, that maybe for the first two years before we hired someone, before the town hired a Senior Center Director. And, but that was a long time ago, as Bill can attest. Um. So, uh, have your bylaws been updated, do I have the current version?
That's one of the, one of the things on our agenda right now is to update the bylaws. Because they are poorly outdated.
Yeah, that would be a good thing, and I don't envy you, because if you have people that think that basically they own the Senior Center, or everything in it, or most of what's in it, then when you go to change those bylaws and you go to change that, um, I think you're probably gonna have a problem, so. So, I don't envy you.
Thank you.
Good luck with that.
Thanks.
Is there anything else that, that? I mean, one of the things that, that, that we have established, and we started, uh, this month was we were gonna have, uh, monthly meetings with the First Selectmen, the president and vice president of ASCO, and our director there. Um.
Good.
And, and, and I think that's gonna be helpful to make sure one hand knows what the other's doing, or what we can do to complement one other. And clarify things, I thought it was a very, uh, productive meeting, our last meeting that we had. Uh, and we schedule one for next one.
Right.
Already. Um. So I, I think we're taking some steps in the right direction, and I, as I said at that meeting and at your last two Board of Directors, our goal is to outreach and get more people participating. Um. And I, I know that's ASCO's goal, and it's been the town's goal, or we wouldn't have built that building to, to meet that need, um. So I'm hoping working together, we could not only get along, but also be of more benefit to our patrons.
Yeah, it feels like a really good start, Kit and I have since had, um, at least one semi-formal conversation about, um, items that we can work. She needs us to do, and we need her to do, um, just little things, but it's, um, it, it went very smoothly, and, and we're both looking forward to working together.
Excellent, excellent.
Very good.
That's all we can ask, that's what it's all about, is looking, we you know, we're gonna be successful if we're all successful, so. But, Esther, anything to add?
Well, I just wanted to, um, add that next week, although Kit will be absent, um, the Senior Center is hosting a Halloween party on Tuesday, the thirty-first, it's a luncheon, it's, it just, costumes are encouraged or allowed, because Kit likes that, she won't be there. But some of the ASCO officers are working as volunteers, and then there's some of Kit's regular volunteers, and so we just wanted to mention it, that any of the selectmen, or it's open to the public, anybody who would like to attend, we always enjoy seeing our town leadership there when we collaborate.
Uh, I'll be attending, and if I'm, I'm hoping I'll be helping.
Absolutely.
Who do you, who do you have running that?
It is the thirty-first, which is Tuesday, and it's lunchtime. And there will be food, and, um, you know, some Halloween decorations, like napkins, maybe.
Who's, who's running that, Esther?
I'm, I'm one of the lead volunteers for that, but it, it's under Kit's umbrella as a center activity, this, this, the center is fronting the grocery money.
Last year was a lot of fun.
Yeah, it, it's, it's a lot of fun, and then some of the ASCO officers are volunteering, such as myself and Cindy Hannan. Yeah, it, it's, it's a lot of fun. And then some of the ASCO officers are volunteering such as myself and Cindy Hannan.
Nice, nice. I hope to be there. Um, I've been subpoenaed to a court proceeding that day, so I'd much rather be at your party, but we'll see how it goes. Thank you though. Anything else, Esther?
No, just to commend Public Works has been doing a great job getting the garbage out of there and, you know, take care of some of the things that Kit has needed done due to her, um, mobility issues, you know, moving some of the tables, what, things like that. So.
I do have, I do have a question, and maybe it's more for Bill. Bill, um, what, for whatever reason, they're not doing recycling in there. There's no recycling bin. There's no separation of the trash? The way that we expect people in the rest of the town to separate their trash? Yes, Esther.
We do have a recycling bin, um, inside the kitchen. So if ASCO is running bingo and selling soda cans.
Yeah.
Or water bottles, then people bring it up to the window and it gets put into a recycling bin. But as for what the regular public do, they must bring their own cans in or something that we're not aware of because it's not part of Kit's normal, um, programming that anyone would have cans. They make coffee with the cups, paper cups, and they have iced tea or water. But if people are bringing cans in and aren't familiar with the center and they don't know, it's, it's inside the kitchen by the hand wash sink.
Oh, very good. And you were going to say something, Sandra?
Yes, I, I spoke with Kit, um, months ago about the, um, about possibly recycling in the office, the paper versus, um,
Yeah.
just plain trash. And she's said that the, um, cleaning company that comes in and empties all the trash bins doesn't do recycling. So I don't know if there's some kind of, um, co-op, cooperation we can do with them to see if they can't incorporate that into their Wednesday night cleaning.
What, an interesting thing along those lines, Catherine, is, is, uh, we were notified, Chris got a call from Casarella that, who's, who's our, uh, Refuge Collection Group here we deal with, that they are recommending that we do not, uh, uh, do any sorting at time. They've got a multimillion dollar machine coming in to their facility there. And they say they're going to be mixing everything together and then sorting it at their facility. So I've asked for some, something in writing from them. I haven't seen it yet. But it's kind of an interesting trend that we're seeing on this.
Um, it'd be, it'd be interesting to get to see how they do that down there.
It would be, it would be. I know that a number of years ago, DeVivo, Willie Waste had bought a sophisticated machine. It was not exactly successful in its endeavors. But apparently this is an upgrade to that and, and I'll share whatever information we get in, of course, with the board.
Yeah, if there's an opportunity to see it, I'd love to, uh, I'd love to do that.
Don't think, if I heard Chris right, it's not actually operational yet, but it's in the near future.
That way, uh, if at least one of us sees it, we can at least explain to the public how, that it's actually happening and that's how it works. As opposed to the company just telling us that. Yes, Esther.
I apologize, I didn't, I wasn't thinking cardboard or paper. And
Yeah.
the, the issue, the item about the cans and bottles, some senior that Kit knows comes in and takes those and takes them to a vending machine. I just don't, I can't point to who that person is, but she knows who that is. So somebody does take them, they don't get commingled after the fact. And I apologize, I wasn't thinking about cardboard or those other types.
I'm, I'm glad there being, uh, there's been a little profit off of that. So that's good for somebody who needs it.
All right. Well, thank you very much for joining us. You're welcome to stay and enjoy the rest of the meeting with us if you'd like, or you can leave, we won't take it personal.
Thank, thank you for coming in and thank you for your efforts to make everything work well. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, please. Have a good day.
Thank you all. Hi Roger, thank you.
Uh, pleasure.
Thank you to Dave Teval for giving us a heads up. So we had got our dishes mostly washed before we lost power. For the day.
Oh, we lost power.
Nice meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry too, Roger.
No problem. See you folks. Thank you again.
Thank you. Yeah, that saved us.
All right, we will re, return to our, uh, normal agenda, which is item five, acceptance of the minutes, regular minutes of October 10th. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any further, uh, there's a motion been made on the floor, all in favor, um, is there any further discussion, corrections, additions, subtractions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes of the 10th of October, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, item six here from boards, commissions and committees. I don't see anybody joining us. Um, item seven, old business, status of the after-school program. Um, I continue to have, uh, interaction and discussions with our superintendent who tells me it's running very smooth and, uh, they are very satisfied and happy with the personnel that we've hired. Um, and those folks seem very happy with the programs. So, uh, so far, so good. They're averaging 18 participants a day, although they have 22 signed up. Some of them, um, they were able to work in, and I think I mentioned it at our last meeting, uh, partial weeks, two days or three days.
And this, this still remains free to those, uh, families.
No charge and it's covered under their, uh, ESTR 3, uh, fund. And, um, the superintendent is also applying to the state for this year's round of funding to see that that continues on. And we understand that we meet all of the requirements. Um, so we're hoping that we have a successful application process there.
Good, good things come to those who can wait.
That's it. All right, under, uh, item B, consider funding options relating to the initiation of the Ashridge School Route Project. There are, um, interviews scheduled today with the, um, um, four participants that, um, architectural engineering firms had put in for that. The, um, building committee is initiating and having those meetings today. I think they start at three o'clock. Um, costing has been in and clarification of that. So I'm hoping that within the probably by our next meeting, that committee will be making recommendations to our board, uh, to actually hire one of those firms. So that's ongoing. Uh, item C, update on transfer station. I think I covered that in, in the selectmen's briefings. Um, the only thing I, I would like to do, um, and I know we talked about it during my briefing, um, perhaps a, uh, a motion would be in order for the board to make an appointment of the, um, initial, uh, selection committee. And um, I'd like to.
So you said on the selection committee, we need to have um.
I was thinking four members, but again, that's, that was just my thought. Um, if you want to serve on that, Catherine, I think it's fine. I was thinking, uh, Karen Zulik, uh, Casey McHugh, and I was thinking Joe Kalinowski, you asked me to qualify that with Casey, which I'm happy to do. I don't think we need any more than that.
Uh, yeah, I think, I agree with that. I'd like to, uh, make the motion to appoint, uh, Casey and Karen. And, um, um, if they, if, uh, and as far as Joe, uh, uh, and anyone else that they feel is appropriate for that committee.
And yourself.
Uh, I'd, I'd love to be on it, but I also respect the fact that these are people who really, uh, know uh, quite a bit about it and what they'll be doing is making their recommendation to us.
Okay. Okay.
What do you think?
We'll, we'll leave that open. I, uh, I felt the same way. I think ultimately our board is going to make the decision on what I would say in my call to that committee would be bring it down to, to three or four candidates and then we will do the, the follow-up interview on that, but.
Perfect.
I have no actions you being part of that initial committee either, Catherine.
No, I'm, I'm good with them doing it.
Okay. Okay. Uh, is there a second for that motion?
I'll make, I'll second the motion.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And what I'll do is I'll have Chris scan in the, um, applications that we've got in today. And, um, we'll get them out to you. Uh, hopefully by the end of the day. Uh, new business, board and commission appointments. I don't believe we have any. All right, item B, tax refunds. Chris, are there any?
I have one.
Okay. Have at it.
Actually have it's two actually. Um, they're both to Toyota Lease Trust uh, citing statute 12 dash 129. One is in the amount of $460.26 and the other is $371.14.
Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Motion. So move, yeah, a second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Is there any more discussion? All in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, folks. Item C, discuss and act on early closing, November, um, Wednesday, November 22nd, 23 for the Thanksgiving Day holiday. Um, typically we do close early. I would suggest either noon or one o'clock.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that, um, town staff be released at noon.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is, uh, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Um, discuss and or act on, uh, formulation of the 24 Board of Selectmen meeting calendar.
Um, what, you have to go back, you forgot the, um, abatement.
Oh, oh, sorry. Item D, act on dairy farm orchard abatement request. Is that been in our package?
We have, Len has received one. It's a horse listeners orchard.
That's it? And, and we did that last year also, right?
Yeah, for the past however many years they've been there, yeah.
I move that we approve that abatement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris, I have a question. Has, has, has that farm been sold?
Yes, but this goes to the
I know, it goes to last year, but I would just, it, so it has been, it has been sold, correct?
It has been, the land has been sold, the business has not been sold. So we don't know what's happening with that, but the land, 153 acres has been sold.
Okay.
Uh, isn't there a, um, isn't there something on that land that says it can't be used for development?
They sold the, they sold the development rights.
Right. That's right.
Yeah.
Development rights. So it can't be developed.
It's got to be farm use. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, item E, uh, discuss and or act on formation, uh, formulation of the 24 Board of Selectmen meeting schedule. Chris.
Uh, Bill. Yeah, I was gonna say, Bill, I think that that should wait until after the election and let the, whoever is on the board at that point um, make those decisions, that decision.
I wholeheartedly agree.
I concur too. Yep.
Okay, well, we'll take, we'll let the record show we're taking no action on this. Uh, item F, discussion re, of the Senior Center, we've already addressed that. Item G, Conservation Commission Presentation Re-Interruption of Zoom Meetings. I don't see, uh, Loretta or anybody, so we'll uh, pass on that. Agenda items for the upcoming Board of Selectmen meeting. Hearing none, but feel free to let us know if anything comes up. Other than that, I've got 944.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good day, everybody.
You too.